Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August 15 of 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment. Chairman Avaloni, will you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coastside Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on their municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east or west sides of the council chambers, as well as on the back of the building. I ask everyone with a cellphone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Roll call.
Wendy Glassman.
Recused and absent.
Recused and absent, thank you. I didn't realize she left, okay. Daniel Harris. Russell Lewis is absent. Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Jose Alvarez.
Sure.
Vice Chair John Scully.
Here.
And Chairman Christopher Avaloni.
Here. All right. So, first application of Interfaith Neighbors, 115-117 Atkins Avenue, Kula Urban Farm. Thank you, Mr. Serpico. Please. And welcome back, Mr. McEvely. It's been quite a long time since I've seen you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to proceed with Mr. McEvely as our first witness and have him sworn. Thank you.
State your full name.
Paul McEvely.
And where are you employed?
I'm the Executive Director at Interfaith Neighbors here in Asbury Park.
And you're bringing this application before the board?
Yes.
And would you describe for the board the nature of this application?
Yeah, we're -- thank you, first of all, for hearing our application this evening. We're before you tonight seeking approval for expanded non-conforming use as a result of our acquisition of 117 Atkins Avenue from Bethel AME Church. Can we continue?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, a little bit of history. The Kula Urban Farm was established in 2015 at 115 Atkins Avenue, following approval of both use and bulk variances by this board in late 2014. A description of farm operations was provided as part of your packet, but perhaps a little history might be in order here. We acquired the original site at 115 Atkins Avenue in 2011. At the time, it was a low-slung 60s-style motel, long boarded up, that was operating illegally in the underground economy and was a blight on the neighborhood. So, at that time, we were building Springwood Center. We acquired the property. We knocked down the former hotel. Our original intent was to build artist-lived workspace there, but we changed our intended use of the property when the state designated certain areas of the state as urban food deserts with the intent of establishing a farm where a certain portion of the yield of the farm would go back to the community free of charge, while other produce would be sold to area residents as part of the farm-to-table phenomenon. We do currently sell to seven-area restaurants, as well as direct sales to the public through an e-commerce website, and sales to private chefs, as well as caterers. Some of the things we grow there: sweet potatoes, cucumbers, squash, beans, turnips, radishes -- how am I doing, Karen? -- beets, okra, spinach, lettuce, pepper, strawberries, all of which are part of the farm's yield. Volunteers and participants in our workforce development programs, as well as Bethel AME youth group children, supplement our own small staff to provide labor needed to operate the farm. But the Kula Urban Farm, as your professionals have rightly pointed out, is much more than a plant, grow, and harvest operation. In 2022, we ran 140 workshops free of charge for the benefit of the public, ranging from how you pickle cucumbers to yoga sessions to mindfulness classes offered by Michael and Rodney at the Kids Organization. We've developed programming with age-appropriate curricula with a particular focus on STEM: science, technology, engineering, and math, as well as mental health for primary school, middle school, high school, and homeschool children in addition to offering adult classes. Sisters Academy, Inspire Life Summer Camp, the Kids Camp, Hope Charter Academy, Our Lady of Mount Carmel, Neptune Middle School Environmental Club, Keene University, Montclair State, East Orange Summer Camp, Madison High School, and St. Rose High School are all regular visitors to the farm. Covenant House Rice of Passage Program will be visiting later this month. Phoenix Recovery House will volunteer this fall, and the Mayor's Wellness Committee regularly meets at the farm. The improvements that we propose here this evening: an open-air pavilion for classes and workshops, which currently take up valuable space in our year-round greenhouse; a kitchen which will allow us to offer a greater number of farm-to-table cooking classes for students, as well as adults, many of whom have a diet consisting of heavily-processed foods with low nutritional content, who may not know how to prepare fresh produce that will hopefully become more abundant courtesy of increased government funding in food-desert communities. Two small restrooms are at the rear of the building. In fact, I think it's fair to say that the farm's mission at this point is directly and squarely focused on health, wellness, and nutrition for the benefit of the community. With this focus on health, wellness, and nutrition, we are well-aligned with the growing awareness on the part of local, county, and state government as more and more funding is being made available to address food insecurity and nutrition issues. I mentioned food deserts earlier. Residents of food-desert communities, of which Asbury Park is ranked as the 17th most disadvantaged community in the state, suffer debilitating chronic diseases resulting from food insecurity, with food-related heart disease being the number-one cause of death in communities. The Food Desert Act passed by the state legislature in 2021, the Food Desert Relief Tax Credit Program created by New Jersey EDA earlier this year, the newly-established Office of Food Security Advocate in the Governor's Office headed by Mark Diglitzon, whom we know well and who has visited the farm and heralded its success on a number of occasions, are all part of the government's move to devote more of the state's financial resources to solving issues related to food insecurity with resulting physical and mental health problems. Most of what we now do at Interfaith Neighbors, in fact, falls under the broad umbrella of building healthier and more equitable communities. The farm and its proposed expansion is a major part of our own strategy to meet the needs of the community that we serve. All that said, the farm is not a self-sustaining operation, nor will it ever be. Sales last year amounted to about $50,000. Our cost to operate: $250,000 annually. The cost of these improvements: $400,000 to $450,000. The work we are doing there and the beneficial impact it has for the community in terms of health, wellness, and nutrition justify this level of investment on our part and hopefully provide the necessary justification for the expansion of the Kula Urban Farm onto 117 Atkins Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, with regard to the operation, if the relief that you seek here tonight is granted, will there be any change to the operation over there? Or is it more -- well, describe what the changes would be if they're right.
No, there won't be a change in the operation as much as the facilities will better serve the needs of the community. So, our staff won't change. The growing operation won't change. Part of the greenhouse now is reserved for workshops and use for the classes and students that go there. That will be taken out of the greenhouse. That space given back to 24-hour growing. The open-air pavilion is where we'll hold the workshops. And of course, the kitchen. The kitchen helps us as an additional asset when it comes to food security and food insecurity. One of the reasons why we've decided to establish a kitchen is back in 2014, when we originally established the farm, we actually ran the Kula Cafe. So, we had access to that kitchen. That space is now leased to Macro Bites, and we no longer have access to that facility to run our cooking classes. So, we've decided to establish -- we'd like to establish a kitchen at the farm location.
With regard to the lots, is it your intention that if the relief is granted today that you're going to execute a deed of consolidation, creating a single lot
Absolutely.
on which this whole project sits?
Yes, absolutely.
I have no further questions. And a witness has been up to the board. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McEvely?
Yeah. Good evening.
Danny.
Will there be an increase in employees?
An increase, sounds right.
An increase in employees?
No, we don't anticipate any increase in employees. The staff right now, we have two farm managers. One is full-time, one is part-time. And we have three other part-time workers. I think I said that the maximum staffing is on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons as three employees.
Okay, some community farms allow for free vegetables to members of the community. Is that part of the plan?
Uh, I'm sorry.
I know it's being sold. I know you sell vegetables to restaurants and to people, and that comes to about $50,000. But will there be any, like, free vegetables? Just, you know, given to distribute it to the community?
Yeah, it's a great question, Danny. The $50,000 comes from the yield we sell to the restaurants. Annually, we donate approximately 3,500 pounds of fresh produce to -- directly to the residents of the community or through Bethel's food pantry.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Do you see an increase in parking that's going to come from the expansion?
Yeah, yeah, we really don't. You know, right now, there's a driveway with a curb cut that's available for parking at 115 Atkins Avenue. Frankly, it's rarely used. One of our employees actually lives in one of the apartments at Springwood Center, doesn't own a car, has a bicycle. So, parking really has not been a problem, and we don't anticipate it'll be a problem going forward since we're not adding to staff.
Aren't you providing classes? And wouldn't you have all the people attending those classes to have to park or to have to access the site?
Yeah, so if it's the schoolchildren that are coming for one of the programs that we offer, you know, they're normally having transportation provided by their school. If it's one of the class --
So, it's only children, sorry?
I'm sorry?
It's only children that come to your classes?
It would not only be children, but many of the classes we offer are designed for school-aged children. But we also have classes that are open to the public, and they normally are on Saturday mornings. And whether they drive and park in the Springwood Center parking lot or curb parking, which is generally available in the area, it hasn't proven to be a problem.
Please.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Doug Valant, board engineer.
Thank you, Jay. Do you have a question, Doug?
Yeah, so I did have some questions about the actual farm operation. Is that going to be handled by you? Or will you have the farm manager come up and give testimony?
No, you can ask me.
Ask away.
Okay, so we had just questioned in the materials that were submitted, you talked about how you compost everything on-site. So, can you give us a little -- because it's not shown on the plan. How, where, how much? You know, how does that work?
Yes. So, we do recycle and compost all of our waste. There's a compost pile right now behind the shed at 115 Atkins Avenue. We recycle in accordance with the town's pickup for recycling. We also -- we have a regular garbage can that we put out. It's not even a 55-gallon drum. It's a 30-gallon drum. And whatever household-type waste we produce goes out, and then goes out to the street. So, refuse. We try to reuse everything, and that's what the composting is for. One of our farm managers is -- I think there's another term for this, but I will use. She's into trash art. She's quite well-known for her trash art. So, some of what we're recycling goes into Lisa's artwork.
So, where will the compost -- is the compost area moving or changing?
No. No, it'll stay behind the existing shed at 115 Atkins Avenue. By the shed and is wheeled out on pickup day.
In this expansion, Mr. McEvely, I would assume you're going to get a lot more people coming to purchase your vegetables and produce. Can you estimate how that would affect the overall traffic in the area at the time that you're selling your goods?
Yeah, the way we typically operate there is when we're selling to the public, it's through an e-commerce website. So, they're placing their orders, and pickup is between the hours of 2:00 and 4:00 on Friday or some such thing. There's a two-hour time block when there's pickup for weekly orders.
So, everything is done online?
When we're selling to the general public, yes.
So, you wouldn't expect it?
People who -- now, someone who attends a workshop, you know, if the workshop has to do with planting or flowers, whatever, there may be a sale as part of the workshop. But generally speaking, when we're selling to the public, it's through the e-commerce website.
So, people don't go there to grocery shop?
No.
Prove it.
No, they order ahead, and they come and pick up in a defined -- in a defined manner.
And how is the purchase actually made? Through the website itself?
The marvels of electronic commerce.
Any further questions from either the board professionals or the board?
Are there deliveries? Do you get a lot of deliveries? I never know what to deliver, but can you just talk about that a little bit?
The restaurants that we serve, some of the chefs will come pick up. Others will make the delivery. You know, they're all in the immediate area. We do have a van that is normally parked in the Springwood Center parking lot.
Do they utilize -- there's that -- it's not a parking space. Thing was originally supposed to be designated as a loading area. Is that what they utilize when they go home and go on?
Yes, it can be used for load-in and load-out, but frankly, there's little or no loading in because, you know, we start with seeds. And the load-out, the deliveries are normally small and they're local, so, you know, we're not backing up a big straightback truck and filling it. It's actually the smallest transit connect for transit connect, and the individual deliveries will go out and come back in 15 minutes.
Any further questions from the board or board professionals? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Hold off Mr. McEvely. Is there anyone in the public that would like to question Mr. McEvely's testimony? Seeing none, please proceed, Mr. Barrett.
We need to get things marked.
Where are you looking at this?
Up here.
As close as you can get it to us so that we can see it. You know, we're all.
Sometimes that might be further. Shall we get this marked, Jay?
Yeah.
The drawing was submitted, so I don't know. They may have already --
They've been submitted?
You may testify from it. It should be marked.
Okay.
Maybe A1?
Yep.
You want to do each sheet, or are we doing the entire?
No, do A1 consisting of whatever sheet you want.
A1 is four sheets, A1 to A4, and also a colored rendering of the street elevation, which will get time on. But it is the same, the exact same drawing that you have in the set. It's just colorated.
You guys are ahead. Some square for test one. I'll show you.
I do.
State your name for the record. Spell it.
Stephen J. Carlidge, C-A-R-L-I-D-G-E.
Could we have the benefit of your credentials, Mr. Carlidge?
Yeah, I'm the president of Shorepoint Architecture, right up Main Street over there in Ocean Grove, on the corner of Ocean Grove and Route 33. I've been there since -- we've been operating there since 2001. I think we're 22 years now. One of the things we just recently did is your new firehouse, which is about to break ground. I've been practicing architecture in New Jersey since 1983. I actually, as I mentioned to a few people, and don't hold this against me. I know that this could have mixed -- could be mixed emotions, but one of the first things I ever drafted when I got out of school was this very building that we're sitting in. My boss at the time was Mr. Floyd Scott. I don't know if any of you remember Floyd, but Floyd was a very prominent architect in this area back in the '60s and '70s. Unfortunately, he's passed -- long since passed away. Yeah, I've been practicing actually all over the country. I used to run a practice in Philadelphia with over 600 architects and engineers and nine offices in seven states.
I think you had me with this building, so.
I was afraid to mention that because I know the building has some shortcomings.
Thank you, Mr. Carlidge. We accept your credentials. Please proceed.
You gonna ask me, or am I gonna?
Well, would you give the presentation to the board?
What I want to do is just explain to you what the building consists of. As you know, the building, as Mr. McEvely just mentioned, there's an existing shed on the building. That shed is situated just to the south -- sorry, to the south of the proposed new building. The new building is actually conceived as, in addition to the existing building, the monument of the monument is a function as a single structure. So, we're adding a new 1,154-square-foot structure. It's two stories. It consists of, not very much, but just a kitchen, as Mr. McEvely mentioned. We used to be able to use the kitchen in Kula Cafe. We now need a kitchen for the instructional programs here on-site. So, we're adding a kitchen and two restrooms to support. Obviously, those are necessary for the functions that go on in the building. We have also added a second floor, which is nothing but storage space. There's never enough room. We don't have a basement, so we've added a second floor for storage. That's the stairs that we access the second floor. It's just used for dry goods storage. The building faces the street. The front elevation is this elevation. This is the existing shed, which has a door, and then a covered area to itself. The new building has an open passageway to get to the rear to access the restrooms. It has a rolling grate to access the kitchen, so the kitchen can serve out directly to the pavilion. It's an access door to the kitchen. And then, because we are two stories, you've added a stair. You can use this stair to go up to the second floor. This is the pavilion. This is looking from the north side, from the church side looking south onto our site. The pavilion will be open-air. It will have a heavy timber construction with metal plates holding the joints together and a solid roof. The roofing, in fact, is switched to this. The roofing will be asphalt shingles to match the existing shed. The siding will be vinyl siding to match the existing shed. It will have a aluminum canopy protecting the doors and the service window to the kitchen. This is where -- these windows are here simply to provide some relief for the front elevation. This is all storage from this point up. And we will probably have a kitchen hood, so we have shown the hood exactly because that's the only piece of mechanical equipment that will be on the site. All of this is existing. This is the new portion right here. Obviously, this won't even be that visible from the street because the pavilion, the open-air pavilion, which this is an elevation of it, will sit between this building and the street. And for the record, this is 24 feet, 4 inches tall. This is the new structure, so it's -- obviously, we don't have any height issues there. The existing structure is 14 foot, 4 inches tall, just to give you a reference. And that's the whole building. That's what we're proposing. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
What is the square footage again?
The square footage is, I think it was 1,154 square foot or two, and that counts storage space.
Are there mechanicals?
The only mechanical equipment will be what goes in the kitchen.
So, no AC?
Not AC, no.
No heating?
There won't be any. You know, even if we do put a small furnace in there, it'll be on the interior just to keep it tempered, and there'll be a vent. It'll be, you know, high efficiency. And we will have a water heater, obviously, and that will be high efficiency as well.
And what will be stored in that area?
Storage?
What will be stored in that area?
Dry goods to support the operation, the kitchen, the cooking, the operation, the instructional needs and things like that. Just dry goods.
Nothing planable.
Maybe some hot sauce, but no, I don't think so. But there's no intention to have guests or anything like that.
Is there an intention to serve food so as a restaurant? Because you have the service window, and then you have the covered multipurpose pavilion. So, it seems that you are planning to.
It's not going to be a restaurant. What happens is we have instructional programs. People will be in the kitchen, learning how to prepare nutritious meals. Then, they used to try to sit under this small area here. It's not large enough. They'll be sitting out here, but there will be the opportunity to serve the food through this window just to make the operation smooth. But it's not a restaurant when I'm planning on having a restaurant like that.
And that's another question that I have. It's the kitchen seems too small to have people inside and watching what is happening. So, if you're teaching people, I don't think there is enough space for people to see. And the window seems too small to be able to see what is happening in the kitchen.
We actually have a kitchen planner involved, a commercial kitchen planner, who's going to lay out the actual kitchen so that it will work. So, we're confident that with the size groups that we have, that it will work. Like I said, it's not a restaurant. We're not producing large quantities of food for large groups. It's small workshops, hands-on workshops. So, the people are going to be in the kitchen, actively involved in cooking.
So, how many people do attend our session?
How many people? I don't know these -- do you know the numbers you get in your workshops?
Normally, 10 to 12 would be the number. I do want to add that we do, on occasion, host --
Can you come forward so they can pick this up on that?
I do want to add a note, a third, that we do, on occasion, host farm-to-table dinners for the community. And those numbers could be 20 to 25 people. Doesn't happen very often, but we have hosted in the past farm-to-table dinners. Hopefully demonstrating what fresh produce can be changed to a table.
And it's not considered a restaurant because of what? What reason? Why is it not considered a restaurant? If you're providing food to people?
We're not licensed as a restaurant, and we don't have regular hours.
And they're not charging for food. They're not selling.
So, everything is for free?
For farm-to-table dinners, it depends on the group. It could be a community group that comes in. It would be at no charge. We've also had nonprofits that come in at a board meeting, and so we'll serve them food. So, it kind of depends on the event. But it is clear it does not operate as a restaurant. There are no established hours. It's not seven days a week, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. That doesn't happen. And we're not.
Just as an aside, Doug, this is considered a minor development. Is that correct for?
For stormwater?
For stormwater?
Yes.
So, how is that going to be treated? Can you tell us?
I think the stormwater question's better answered by the engineer.
Okay.
I was glad you didn't ask me the farming question earlier, too.
Does anybody else have any questions from Mr. Carlidge?
Well, you think that the space in the kitchen is sufficient for 12 students and an instructor?
For smaller group instruction, yes.
And how many instructors will be there?
10 to 12. How many instructors?
Instructors, yeah.
One or two at the most, right?
Usually one instructor.
One instructor.
Anyone else from Mr. Carlidge?
So, just to clarify, in terms of mechanicals, you said no air conditioning, but potentially a furnace?
We got air conditioning. We had planned on it, so I don't -- and if we would, it would probably be a mini-split, which will be a very small condenser, and we'll screen it appropriately if we end up going that route in the future.
I'll open it up to the public for Mr. Carlidge. All right, thank you.
They keep creeping up behind you.
Yeah, well, that's the only path we have.
You want me to take that one behind you, though? Tell us your name from the record.
My name is William E. Fitzgerald. I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. Practicing for a long time. Actually, was born and raised in the city. And I taught in a few high schools locally, and then I started engineering work in the state in 1977. And I've had my own practice since 1981. I've been planning...
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, that's great. We're good?
Yes.
Would you walk us through the engineering plan?
Sure, I did. And I will...
We'll have this marked?
Yeah, so this is an identical set, unsealed and unstable, but it's identical to what you were receiving inside it.
Here's my, so make this eight-two.
Consists out of eight sheets. I'll throw them kind of briefly as we deal with the engineers later all at the same time. I think that's probably the easiest way to deal with it. Okay, so the initial sheet is what we call a cover sheet in general. It's a vicinity map, and it has your site information, zoning information, calculation, and a few general notes about the site. Pretty much shows all the properties within 200, well more than 200 feet. Local streets, right of ways. I did not show existing pavement with what we will. And it shows all the buildings within 200 feet of the site. The second sheet is an existing condition plan based upon a survey prepared specifically in connection with this application, so it's part. And it basically shows the existing development on a 75-foot lot, which has the existing greenhouse, some raised planting beds, the shed that they were talking about, the open hang, sidewalk, street utilities, adjacent property in the stringwood center, the church next door, and some houses nearby, as well as right-of-way improvements.
When you refer to the church next door, you're referring to Bethel Building, where they do their food pantry out of?
Well, I'm sorry, you wanted to...
When you refer to the church next door, you're referring to the pantry that Bethel has there?
It's the Ford Center.
Yeah, I only know that it's a church operation, and I'm not familiar with the operation.
Yes, it's the Ford Center pantry and food closet.
Okay, and that building will remain?
Okay, we're hoping not to have any impact on that.
Just hide in the...
The third sheet is pretty much a facility stand, but it's partly the application. So I'll start from the rear of the property and work forward. As Steve the architect was saying, the primary addition is planned, or the primary building expansion is planned as in addition to the existing building. And forward of that, or to the east of that, is the open air pavilion. And then the remaining site area will be taken up with more additional plant beds. Okay, the existing greenhouse will stay, and very little will happen to existing improvements. There's also a paver path, it's a permeable paver system, connecting the existing sidewalk on Atkins Avenue with all of the buildings existing and proposed on the site, and that path will be pariser-free. One of the things shown on sheet three of the plan is an expansion of the pavement area on the site. And that was kind of a reaction to some of the early review comments regarding parking. And so I think what we intended to do is show that onsite parking could be expanded. When I read your planner's letter, and I had a brief discussion with your engineer, and my personal opinion is that the site should remain exactly as is. There's, we heard the testimony from Mr. McEvely, that there's very little use, very little need. My recommendation, we don't put any more impervious cover on the site. It is absolutely not needed for any purpose. And on-street parking is more valuable than off-street parking in this scenario because this is a relatively unintensively used site, particularly as for parking. But this whole area is making a huge comeback. So when this farm is not operating most nights of the week, the neighborhood may be, and people are not inclined to park on private property in the evening, but they are likely to park on the street. So my particular recommendation, as the architect engineer, but I think, as I look at it from the city's point of view, I think you're better off just leaving that alone and keeping all of the on-street parking, not making any changes.
So if I understand that correctly, you're not going to expand the curb cut?
Yeah, I think that we would like to remove this and just leave things as they are. Unless there's some real need.
Did you say that you're not going to expand the curb cut anymore?
Correct.
Okay.
Just leave everything as it is.
Okay.
No more impervious.
So you're not going to eliminate a parking space, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it's more valuable for the city to have the extra on-street stall than it is to have an extra stall on this site that no one could use.
I would agree with that, Mr. Fitzgerald.
So that's pretty much the utilities plan, or, I'm sorry, the layout plan. And once we eliminate that, it's really basically is the addition, as the architect can testify to, the paper path connecting everything, which is a permeable paper path and the proposed farm beds. The next plan is a grading and drainage plan, and I heard that come up, so let me tell you what we are proposing. And number one, again, I had a conversation on the phone with your board engineer, and one of the questions he had regarding that, we will conform to the letter with city ordinance as Mr. McEvely mentioned. What we are proposing, and may need to do a little more study on, is a permeable paver system, which...
Where are you directing the water right now, Mr. Fitzgerald? Where are you going to direct the water?
Okay, so the permeable pavers have a stone bed beneath them. But below that is a stone trench with piping, perforated piping. The pipe slopes from the extreme rear of the property all the way forward across to the west of the front yard, farm beds and parking area, and has an overflow grate near the southeast, southwest, southeasterly corner of the site. That system, if it, in a 25-year storm, gets overflowed, and we're run out to the street alongside the existing asphalt driveway cut. Whatever can get infiltrated into the ground will go into ground. Whatever can't will get to the street. And there's a fair amount of storage, but it was not designed as a detention system. It was designed as a system to collect water from all of the new impervious cover and half of the existing greenhouse and get it out to the street if it can't get into the ground. We did not do soil tests yet, we will. We need to do that to comply with the ordinance, but water is getting to the street if it doesn't get into the ground. Obviously, we're trying to get as much into the ground as we can.
I assume you'll work with our board engineer to meet those requirements, Mr. Fitzgerald?
The fifth sheet is a path lighting and planting plan. The path lighting, we're using a baller, which is really small and very natural looking. And detail of that baller is on the last sheet or T V. There it is, right above the pedal block. And basically, it looks like a log with an L-shaped cut in it, in which the upper part of the L, the horizontal piece, there's an LED light source that shines downward onto the path. And we propose these, and they are only two feet high at most. The idea is to not be really highly visible physically, or in terms of light pollution.
There's never any need for operation in the night, or...
No, so what we want to do is lighten the path when it's being used. And so what we have proposed, although what we're showing on the path lighting plan, is the illumination levels for the path. And they're typically, I have the statistics on there. In terms of the lighting temperature, it's LEDs, so the temperature, it meets the 2,700 limitation of the ordinance. And basically, the average illumination on the path is about 1.2, 1.3 foot candles. So the question came up, because I only showed illumination of the path. Excuse me for a second. But as would be expected, the question came up, you know, what are the off-site impacts? And I knew that there wouldn't be too many, but I have an exhibit, and I guess I'll give these to Michelle. You distribute these as you need. A three?
A three?
Yes. If you want, I can hand them out to you. I can give you P D S, Mr. Fitzgerald. Yep, thank you. So the question that Doug had is, you know, what are the off-site impacts? So I took, the ISO foot candle levels are in the black on the path, that they are what the ones that are on your plan. The ISO foot candle levels in red are the additional values that we calculated with the baller, that we could talk about impacts, if you can get a sense of... There we go. Thank you. I've got plenty of them. Yeah, give me yours. Okay, so again, the red ISO foot candle levels are what we've added to those on the plan just for the point of view of impacts. And so because these are so small, and they are full cutoff, downshining, everything that you want if you're worried about the night sky impacts. When you get to the property lines...
But there's never any operation going on at night, is there?
And that's what we said. We will add this note onto the plan, which says, number one, that the system will be turned on manually. It's only when there's an evening event that it requires lighting.
An evening event, what does that mean?
Well, so if you were having a workshop at 4 o'clock in December, and you get out of there at 6:00 or 6:30, you would want path lighting. But if you're doing it at 7 o'clock in June, and you got out of there at 8:30, you wouldn't need path lighting.
Is that the case, Mr. McEvely, that you would have nighttime operations? Are we considering to be...
It would very rarely happen that we'd have it at night. Could be that a workshop would go up at 5 o'clock in the late fall, and, you know, lighting may help there. But it rarely happens that there would be an evening...
So the illumination is more just...
For safety, now, what am I going to say? It will only be turned on if there is an event, because it won't be on every day. It won't come on every day at 4 o'clock with a light sensor. They'll be off unless they're turned on, and it'll be turned off when people leave the site. And I said additionally, if needed be, we could put motion sensors on so that if there was no activity on the path for more than 10 minutes, it would shut off.
But I also don't want the neighbors to be affected by any illumination that may be shining through their windows.
Okay, well, that would, the point of calling back, if you would, that detail, which is on the last sheet, because these units are only 24 inches tall. Okay, so I'm pointing to the unit at the lower rate of sheet eight, which is right above pedal block. And if you look at the section, which is the illustration on the left, there's just slightly higher than horizontal cutout in one side of these ballers, which look like logs in reality. And the LED is in that flat section shining downward. So if you're standing at the property line, or even behind this, and you look at it, you don't see the light source. You might see a little splash of light on the path, but these things are very, they're not particularly projected in terms of illuminating like 10 feet, which is, you know, why I alternated them, working my way out of the path. We put two near where you would enter the site, but then I just alternated as we walked up the site to the west, enough to keep the path lit when you get near the buildings. The buildings by code have to have a light over different entrances. And so at that point, it takes over. These things go away, there's only a few of them on the site.
Will there be lights on the open air pavilion?
There will be lighting, the ceiling lighting in the open air pavilion.
But nothing on the outside?
Nothing on the outside. Oh, well, a building, a entrance mounted lamp. The architect can give you more detail on it, they show on his plan, okay? Because it's required by code, it's a building. But other than that, there's not a lot of illumination proposed on the site because there's not a lot of need for it.
Can I ask, just again, for contextual purposes, the reason why the new improvements are to the rear of the lot, there are two reasons. Number one, we want to retain as much planting beds as we can on the lot. But also, in acquiring the property from the Bethel community, Bethel asked us if we could place at the rear any structure they were mounting so that the Ford Center would not be blocked by anything, any improvement that we've put on the property. And that's really why you see this long path from sidewalk to our new structures, because we purposely helped the structures back to the rear of the lot.
Thank you, Mr. McEvely.
Could they be shorter? They're two feet, right? They're two feet high, right? Is there any reason they couldn't be shorter, smaller?
That's pretty standard for a baller.
The problem is, then you can't, you... Okay, so if you take a flashlight, you can visualize it, and hold it very close to the table, you get a small circle of light. And the higher you raise it...
The higher you get to the grid.
So I needed to get them, the light source itself is only about 18 or 19 inches above the ground, the top of the log, because that's what they look like. They look like logs in a natural state, kind of standing on end, if you will. Okay, but the actual luminaire itself is only about, I think I have a dimension on there, 18 inches. Okay, from the ground level to the luminaire itself, which is under the ledge.
Yeah, when you said 18 inches...
If I were to get it closer than that, I'm not going to get any splash on the path.
No, when you said 18 inches, you answered my question.
Yes.
Okay, so they're basically functional, not decorative, correct?
Right. I mean, I don't know how to get them any lower, and...
No, 18 inches answered the question, okay?
So you would need, if I did bring it lower, you would need more of them.
Yes.
It's probably less redundant than what you have.
With the proposed buildings being pushed to the back of the lot, do you see any light spillage onto the two properties behind, which are single family?
Okay, so I did not, that'd be a question for the architect because I did not deal with building light.
There are only two lights, one over each door at each of the two restrooms, and those are designed, they're gooseneck-type fixtures, so the light is pointed straight down over the door. And they're going to have 60...
Mr. Carlich, if you're going to testify, you're going to have to come up.
We actually had a detail on our plan, it's on A4, of the gooseneck fixture. So there's a, by code, every door, exterior door, has to have a light, it has to be illuminated. So we have these two fixtures, they'll have a 800 to 1100 lumen light fixture, pointed straight down, right in front of the door, right over the door. So there won't be any spillage onto the property behind because the fixture itself is up inside the canopy of the fixture, of, you know, the gooseneck fixture, so. And again, it's required by code. If I have a door, I have to have a light fixture.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carlich. Please proceed, Mr. Fitzgerald.
So, and we have some planting, some ornamental plantings, which are farm-type or type in nature, flowering, et cetera. But, I mean, the focus of our operation is farming and produce. And so as much space as possible, we utilize for our raised farm beds, raised produce beds, and cover the ground with mulch, where obviously, you don't have to walk through mud to tend the beds, and it's presentable, and it's organic, and it's permeable. After that, we start getting into the engineering stuff that can quickly dislape, like erosion and sediment control. We recognize, and your engineer rightly answered the question, we have to get a certification from real soil. We'll also have to get a certain, an approval or a letter of notice from Mom and Dad planning for the city sure to already have this approved. We would normally do those things on the use variance. Because this is such a small operation, the impacts are not going to be objectionable to any use, so we're aware. It can be mitigated necessarily, but we have to comply for the outside agency yet. I haven't been doing it a long time, I don't see any issue with attending them. So I can answer questions, or I can go right to the board's engineer's letter, and then answer questions, or whatever.
Well, let's see if the board has any further questions for you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Anybody on the board?
Okay, one thing I hadn't seen, and this might be a question for the architect, is drainage coming off the roof of the building?
Okay, so I have that. So, as I mentioned to you, let me just try to do it in a logical order. Surrounding and in-between existing and proposed buildings is a permeable paver path. So water that hits that path goes vertically down. Beneath that path is a stone and pipe trench system. So you have the pavers on the surface, and they accept water at rates far greater than typically fall, even in 100-year precipitation events. It's collected by a stone bed beneath the pavers. Goes down into a stone trench, which is substantial in size because I wanted it below the frost level. So the bottom of this trench is almost four feet below grade, just so it doesn't freeze up. In that trench is coarse, clean, crushed stone and a perforated pipe. So anything that goes through the pavers goes into this trench. Anything that collects by the roof drainage system, the gutters on the roofs, will be piped directly... piped directly into this pipe. The pipe slopes from the back. For Wesley area of the site, pipe slopes all the way underground to a point near where there's a drainage casting. That if the pipe overflows, the water will run across the front lawn and out to the street. If it overflows, it's because the water that gets in the system is greater than can be infiltrated into the ground. But any water from all the new impervious cover and half of the existing is going to be directed to the street by that system.
The east side of the building, are those gutters and leaders connected to this perforated pipe as well?
Yes.
Because that's the...
There will be gutters and leaders on the building and they will be connected to the drainage system.
Mr. Carlich, if you testify, please come up.
Because that's the side nearest the church and the water can push over onto their property, so I want to make sure that...
The which side are you concerned about?
I believe it's the east side.
No, it's the wrong way.
It's why I keep doing the same thing.
Yeah, I'm disoriented.
The orientation sideways.
Would it be the north side?
Yeah.
The north side, I'm sorry.
So all sides, all of the eaves of the buildings, the new structures, will be provided with gutters and leaders.
Right.
Those leaders will run directly to grave where they will window a PVC pipe and they will enter into this storm drainage system. Nothing will spill out on the surface, it's all going into the storm drainage system.
Nothing will spill out onto adjacent properties on any side, I mean, that's the whole point.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Board professionals?
All right, so pretty quickly, then, we really have virtually no problems with requested information in the engineer's letter.
Okay.
And so if we're dissatisfied with that, I'll just say I'll address everything to the satisfaction of the board engineer, everything in his letter. The biggest concern that we wanted to discuss with you was whether to expand that parking or not, which I think we all agree is probably not a good idea.
Okay, so you're gonna amend the application to not include the expansion of the little parking area, it'll just remain as is?
Correct.
That's outside support.
I think that's fine.
Excellent. Can you just talk about the fencing briefly?
The fencing, yeah. So there is some existing fencing.
What's the current fencing right now, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'll check, one second. Go on, get to the sheet. This is the existing conditions and the left most, as you look at it, or outside of the most, 75 feet of the site, oh, no, 50 feet of the site, just to include the farm. So there is fencing, although the rear of the property at this point...
What kind of fencing is it?
Six foot chain link.
Six foot chain link.
There is fencing down the side of the property, I'm pointing at this point to the north side, that's four foot chain link. There is fencing, at least that's how the survey picked it up. There is some fencing that is not, looks like ornamental metal fencing across the front of the site and back to approximately 20 feet, 25 feet behind the property line. And across the property at that point is a six foot chain link fence, black vinyl fed chain link fence. So that's what exists. What is proposed is pretty much to expand, to expand the fencing and make it a chain link fence down the northerly side of the property, make it a ornamental metal fence across the front of the property. We had shown the ornamental metal fence being realigned to accommodate the proposed expansion of the asphalt, but we'll leave it alone. Facility or planner is pointing it out and ensure that part of that ornamental fence is forward of the street line into the right of way. It will be moved a foot back as required by the ordinance and the new fence will line up with that a foot back behind the property line.
Did you consider maybe using a different type of fence other than chain link?
Okay, so the existing, are you talking about all around?
Yes.
That would not be my call. I would, I mean, I would consider any.
Actually, again, some historical context. In, when we were before this board in 2014, there were actually three different resolutions passed and approved by the board. The third one dealt with fencing. So, and we're looking to mirror the fencing that was approved by the board in 2014. And I think, most importantly, the fencing at the rear of the property at six foot, that's also a security feature, so we certainly want to retain that height at the rear. I think it's a powder coated chain link right now as well as the ornamental. And it was meant to, this proposal is meant to extend what was approved in 2014.
Is there a style concern or a height concern?
Style. Style.
Across the front or the north side?
All around.
All around. Would you, would you consider changing the fence style on either side of the property and maybe keeping the others?
In order to accommodate the neighborhood a little more to...
Yeah.
Do you understand what I'm trying to get at, Mr. McEvely?
Enhance the property.
Enhance the property and enhance the neighborhood a little bit.
Well, the boundary on the...
Chain link doesn't necessarily do that.
The boundary on the south side is stands between the Springwood Center parking lot and 115 Haggan Center. I would recommend not changing that. It's well shielded with plantings, fruit trees on one side and vines that are harvested on the farm side, so I would recommend not changing that. To improve the look of the fencing on the north side of the site, which is adjacent to the Ford Center, sure, absolutely, we'd do that.
Okay, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't, would be, how you say messed with, but it wouldn't block out the paintings that were done on the Ford Center?
Yeah, again, we don't want to affect the visual, that is the Ford Center, or the mural frankly, that we worked with Bethel put on that building. So whatever it is, it wants to be an open fence, so it doesn't block the building or the mural. But if it wants to be an improved design or improved style of fence, that's fine.
Just to enhance the neighborhood a little bit more.
That's, that's fine, we'd love to do it.
I agree with, I agree with you. I don't like chain link either.
Sure. The thick, the thick style that we have already across the front of the property, how about that?
It's a luminous, it's the black aluminum picket, right?
Yes, yes.
That's fine.
I think that would enhance the whole.
So we'll do that on north boundary.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. So I'm sorry, clarify that, where is this?
I'm assuming it's the north side of the building?
Right, not the church side, but also the east.
At the, at the east.
Front of the east, yeah.
But the back west is gonna stay chain link?
The security chain link.
That's a security, that's a security issue, we would like that to be six foot chain link.
Okay.
But it's fine on that, right?
Yeah.
So it's not highly visible.
And then, so are we saying on the north side is only gonna be four foot? What was the proposed? Six foot chain link?
Maybe four foot.
Four foot, four foot.
Okay, that way it won't obstruct the mural.
The mural, yeah. Building, you know, because that building is used, you know, certain days of the week.
We appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Okay. Is there anything else, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I have nothing else unless I have a question answered.
Any further questions for Mr. Fitzgerald? I can speak. Anybody from the...
I'm sorry, what about the sign? Is that gonna be the architect, is that gonna be Paul?
The actual sign? Wait, 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 wait. Mr. Fitzgerald, we have to ask if anyone in the public would like to question your testimony? No? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Carlich, are you quick on these signs?
We are proposing a sign on the building, just as you see it here. I know signs are not permitted in the residential zone, but in this case, we believe that the sign is necessary. There is a sign on the greenhouse now. The building is obviously not a residence, so it does need some identification. We think the graphic is appropriate, it's 100 feet back from the road, it's, they headed a path and we think it's entirely appropriate.
So if I walk up the path, that's what I see and then in the path?
That's what you're gonna see, yeah.
Yes, the sign has been designed to evoke the logo that we use for the farm.
Is it illuminated as well?
No.
No, okay.
Is it actually behind the pavilion or is it outside?
The pavilion only extends to here.
So it's just outside the edge?
So you'll see it just outside.
Okay.
And what's, and what's the size of the letters?
The size of the letters?
Yeah.
The cool is about 20 inches tall and the urban farm is about 12 inches tall in that font, which is a graphic that Interfaith uses for the farm.
It's gonna be barely, barely, you don't be able to see it that much from the street, but that's all right, that's what you want. Fairly visible, but that's what you want, that's what you want.
Anything else, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses. Oh, yes I do, I beg your pardon, Mr. Higgins. I got him, I got him up here for something, I knew it, just hit me.
Not the first time.
Planners get no respect.
Yeah, that's right.
They don't get more than positive and negative criteria.
Mr. Higgins, please raise your right hand to the sound swear.
I do.
Please state your name for the lack of...
James Higgins, H.I.G.G.I.N.S.
And you are a licensed?
I'm a licensed planner in the state. I've been licensed since 1978.
You know, you know, Mr. Higgins...
I do, I do.
Mr. Higgins was our board planner for years.
A long time ago, though, yes.
Twenty, over 20 years ago, yeah. I don't know why I'm still doing this.
Neither do I.
One minute?
Yes, please.
Okay. Basically, what you have here is, you have an existing urban farm that also has educational opportunities for the neighborhood and for the, for the community that's associated with it that are deal with health, wellness and nutrition. And the applicant is proposing to take that farm, which is on a 7,500 square foot parcel, and expand it onto an adjacent 3,750 square foot parcel. It's between the existing farm and the church, and that's currently basically vacant and basically underutilized. So it's combining the two lots together into one use that's going to be basically the same use that's on the site now, but expanded in terms of the physical area, but not expanded in terms of the intensity of the use. You're gonna have, the new buildings are really intended more to accommodate the existing operation of the site, which is, as you heard, the classrooms are now in the greenhouse, which really is not an ideal situation, so they're gonna have a classroom in a building with a kitchen where they can teach people how to prepare foods and use different foods as dealing with nutrition, with health and wellness. And you heard Mr. McKelvey talk about the fact that the Asbury Park is designated as a food desert community by the state, and what's being proposed here is clearly something that is addressing that issue to try and address the state's concern about the food desert communities in many communities throughout the state, but specifically with this situation in Asbury Park. In addition, your master plan talks about on page 86 in its sustainability section that it says, that one of the, recommends that the city encourage local food production through community gardens and permitting urban agriculture. So this application, again, by expanding what's on the site now, specifically addresses that, that goal of your master plan. So when I, when I look at this, I think, well, first of all, when you have a D variance, a D1 variance, you have to show special reasons. There are two types of special reasons you can show. One is that the use is inherently beneficial, and that, the definition of that in the municipal land use law is that it's a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare, which clearly, when you look at this use, I think it fits that definition. So you could look at this as an inherently beneficial use, and in that case, then the special reasons are met. You could also look at this, the second possibility would be that the general welfare is advanced due to the particular suitability of the site for the use. And clearly, what you have here is an existing urban farm with educational facilities associated with it and a vacant lot and then the church, and expanding the farm into that vacant lot, clearly that expansion, again, is, shows that this site is particularly suited for the, for the use, and the general welfare is advanced because of the nature of the use itself. So either way, I think you have special reasons. You've heard a lot of testimony from the prior witnesses about the site, how it's gonna function, and quite clearly, when I look at, look at this, I don't think there's gonna be any substantial negative impact. If anything, getting rid of, of a 25 foot wide vacant lot and putting it to good use, I think is a substantial improvement. The intensity of use of the site is not going to increase significantly, they're not gonna have any additional employees, you will have some bigger buildings, but again, the bigger buildings are to function, that make the site function better, not necessarily to expand the operations of the site. You've heard testimony on drainage, on lighting, and on the impacts on surrounding properties. Any additional traffic is gonna be minimal, have minimal impact on the area and, that, something went that way. But basically, it's not gonna be any substantial negative impact, there's not gonna be any additional noise, the hours of operation are not gonna adversely impact the surrounding area. So when I look at it, I think clearly you have special reasons for the granting of the variance and you don't have any substantial negative impact. There are some bulk variances that are necessary, I think they've pretty much been addressed. The biggest one would be the rear yard setback, where I think it's 30 feet is required and a six feet is being proposed, and that's because of the Ford Center and the desire to put the building back so that the mural on the Ford Center is visible. So I think that's actually a benefit rather than a detriment. And the side setback that's being requested, that's consistent with other setbacks in the area, I've rode the area, I looked at the aerials, so it's not inconsistent with the area. And again, it allows for more of the site to be utilized for the agricultural purpose. And the, the building coverage, your building or coverage is permitted is 30%, they're proposing 31.7%. And again, that, the ordinance coverage is based on a single family residence, not on an operation such as this, and the difference is, is my, in my mind, the minimus, so that I don't think there's any substantial negative impact, and I think by having a slightly bigger building, having it function better is a benefit for the use. So when I look at all these things, I think there are special reasons, I don't think there's any substantial negative impact, and I think that the board can grant the variance, and you could grant it either as an inherently beneficial use or as the fact that the site is particularly suited for the use.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
I have no further questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Higgins? Board professionals? Anyone in the public for Mr. Higgins? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses.
Are you sure?
No. For now, we're good.
Do you want to make a final comment, Mr. Fitzgerald?
No.
You're good. All right, so I'm gonna open it up for public comment now, if there's anybody in the public that would like to voice their opinions either for or against this application. Please, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Patricia Cooper Powell, and we run...
An address?
Can you hear me?
No.
Oh, my address?
I need to have you, God bless you, I need to have you sworn in.
Oh, you just have me sworn in, okay.
Do you solemn swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give with the truth of the oath of testament?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and then give us your address.
Okay. P.A.T.R.I.C.I.A., Patricia Cooper C.O.O.P.E.R. Powell, P.O.W.E.L.L.
Thank you. Your address?
My personal address is 9 Empire Way, Neptune, New Jersey. I am the director of the food pantry. I am the director of the food pantry that Mr. Ely has been talking about for this time. Our pastor, the Reverend Danielle, Dr. Danielle Hunter is here, as well as two other members are here to hear what was going on, because we feel truly blessed by the program which Interfaith has started right next door to us. And it was very interesting listening to everything he has done, and I definitely wanted to support, because the community needed it. We can have a beautiful community, we can have so many things, but the health of a community is just as important. And I think what they have brought to our community, we give our food, and prior to having them next door, most of the vegetables they received were canned vegetables. And they really didn't even want them. So what they're giving now is healthy food for our community. And in terms of the parking, we serve a community that really walks. They live in the community of Asbury Park, and they walk, and they stand in line to get the food that they need. I see often people who are coming who are driving, but most of them kinda know what they want, and they run in and they run out. Occasionally, we have people who wanna spend more time, or there's a class or something. But I have not experienced that there are any traffic or congestion things going on because of how they operate. So I just wanted to speak in support of it for the community and what it has brought to our community. And I'm very, even though I live in Neptune, I go to the church in Asbury Park, and I feel blessed to serve. So thank you.
Thank you. One thing I forgot to mention, you only have four minutes to. So anybody else in the public would like to comment either for or against this application? And keep in mind, you have four minutes.
Please raise your right hand, solemn swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, this man will tell the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address, please.
Danielle Hunter, D.A.N.I.E.L.L.E. Hunter, H.U.N.T.E.R.
You may wanna hold up a second, you might have to compete with that train. No, roll up, go ahead.
I reside at 1 Van Dyne Drive, V.A.N., second word D is in David, U.Y.N. as in Nancy, Drive in Ewing, E.W.I.N.G., New Jersey, 08618.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I serve as the pastor of Bethel AME Church. I have served as the pastor of Bethel for nine years since April of 2014. And when I arrived at Bethel, the there was a relationship in place between Interfaith Neighbors and Bethel. And I am pleased that over the years, over these last nine years, that that relationship has grown. We are very excited about the vision of Interfaith Neighbors to expand the greenhouse and to establish the outdoor pavilion. We think that this is going to be a very positive project, a very positive extension of their outreach to the West Side community of Asbury Park, and we are in full support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the public, either for or against the application?
Please raise your right hand, solemn swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, this man will tell the truth, tell the truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address, please.
My name is Kerwin Webb, K.E.R.W.I.N., last name Webb, W.E.B.B., address 1506 Bangs Avenue. I am, I rise to speak in support of this initiative because I've firsthand seen the impact of the farm on individuals who are doing, who are trying to change their lives. I do workforce development training and mentoring. And there was one day where a group, one of the young men in the group that I was leading, we went out to the farm just to see it. And it brought back memories of a better time for him with his grandmother, and it was calming to him. And so with this expansion and the additional programs and opportunities that can come from this, it sorta kinda completes the educational corridor that's in that corner right there with the the launch center, with the farm, with the park. And so I I believe that this is a great opportunity for Asbury Park and the residents, because not only is it healthy food, it's also learning and engaging young people in STEM and STEAM type of activities, which will help their educational awareness as well. And so I think it's a great, a great initiative, and I'm looking forward to all that will come from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public, either for or against the application?
Thank you. You solemn swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, this man will tell the truth, tell the truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and spell it, and give us your, give us your address, please.
My name is Gloria Douglas, G.L.O.R.I.A.D.O.U.G.L.A.S. I live at 1 Coral Way in Neptune. I I am in support of this project. I am one of the people who uses the facilities for classes. And I would love to see an expansion, because we're in the little greenhouse sometimes when we do classes, and a little expansion would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public, either for or against the application? Seeing no one else, I'll close public comment. All right. As I, you have no further comments, Mr. Harris? All right, so it's back to the board. Does anyone have any comments in regards to the application?
Well, it's good to see community support for a project, which actually shows us that the applicant and the community are working together. So that's good to see, okay? In reference to diabetes in the black communities, that has basically been perpetuated by poor diet. So the fact that you are increasing fresh foods, fresh vegetables to be put into people's diet, that only does away with diabetes, which will also do away with diabetes, obesity in the black community, and certain degree of longevity in one's lifespan. So based on those reasons alone, I support what you're doing, and glad to see it come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anyone else from the board?
In my opinion, the your mission and the services that you provide that address the needs of the community are a great benefit to the city, the residents of the city. I commend you for presenting us with an application that takes into the consideration the neighborhood and the church, the mural, your reasonableness to listen to our board professionals and change some things, specifically the parking area, the fencing area. So I appreciate your ability to reason and take into consideration, as I said, the neighborhood in which you operate in, and I commend you.
And I will further in support of this application, as I am one of the few people who was here when Kula Farms was first initiated. I am in full support, as I was then, and I am now. So with that being said, I make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Based on with the conditions regarding the fencing?
Yes.
And?
Now, broken.
Please.
There's a, there's usually a set of standard where this, remember how we redeveloped some?
No.
Fence setback, things that represent on record, the fence, we will add, body right way for the setback. No on-site marking is to be proposed, therefore, the man will be filed to that effect. Compliance with the inside letter and recommendations set forth therein by Fitzgerald. The fencing to change, propose a chain link to picket, to a four-foot picket fence similar to one that exists on both the north and the sides. The lots will be consolidated as far as the application. And the signage, I may get some language from Donner on that at some point in the future, that's true. Unless there's something else you want to add in right now, I'll get, I'll say later, get comments from Donner and Donner as well.
And whatever compliance there is with the our board engineer in regards to stormwater management and?
Yeah, that I think is in your, that's in your report.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, full compliance with the recommendations in the report covers all my other interests.
Thank you, Mr. Serpico. Do I have a second?
A second.
Oh, I thought Mr. Scott.
I thought I did, yes.
Oh, you did, okay.
Don, sir, Don, sir.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis is absent. Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jose Alcaraz?
Yes.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Yes.
And Chairman Christopher Avelloni?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chairman. All right, I make a motion to take a 10-minute recess.
Second, why is this application?
Okay. And we'll call Daniel Harris?
Yes, yeah.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Jose Alcaraz?
Here.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Here.
And Chairman Christopher Avelloni?
Here. All right, next application, 211 DeWitt Avenue, Monmouth Investment Partners LLC.
Chairman, I look at the notices and the lot here to be examined.
Thank you, Mr. Serpico. All right. So Mr. Cromer, I assume?
Yes. Good evening, board members. My name's Carlton Cromer, I'm the applicant's attorney. The last application is difficult to follow. We don't have an application as lofty as that one. Ours is much more ordinary. Ours is just looking to build a single-family home in a single-family zone. But the lot that we are looking to build on is undersized according to the zoning regulations, so we need some variances, and that's the reason why we're here. Right now, the property is vacant, but it had a home on it at some point in the past, so we believe that a home works on the property. We submitted plans to show you what we are proposing, but before the professionals talk about them, I want to make three points about our application. Point one is about off-street parking. Small lots like ours create challenges in finding space for off-street parking, but we believe we found a good solution. We do not propose side-by-side parking in front of the yard, because we did not want a front yard to be a blacktop with no greenery. Instead, we are proposing front and back tandem parking that not only satisfies the parking requirement, but also makes space for a beautiful front yard with landscaping. We think we chose the best design option that checks the most boxes for zoning purposes. Point two is about pushing and pulling. The design process involves pushes and pulls. A change that pushes one part of the design leads to a change that pulls another part of the design. And let me give you an example of what I mean. As I mentioned, we were designing for parking. The garage took up a good amount of space on the first floor, but we need still a kitchen and living room on the first floor. We needed to use some of the front yard, side yard, and rear yards to provide for a kitchen and a living room on the first floor in addition to the garage space. So in order to push for off-street parking, we had to pull from the front, rear, and side yards to provide for the necessaries of having a living room space and kitchen on the first floor. Because we are using some of the area set aside for setbacks, we are asking for variance relief from the setback limits. However, at the end of the day, the building will still be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, so there won't be any negatives from using some of the setback areas. And point three is that we designed with the neighborhood in mind. We are proposing a two-story home like the rest of the homes in the neighborhood, and we are proposing a porch and a front yard greenery to keep the look and feel of the neighborhood intact after you allow us, hopefully, to build this home. The first witness that we would like to call is the architect, Mr. Feldman.
I did.
Please state your name for the record.
David Feldman, F.E.L.D.M.A.N., Principal Architect of Feldman, Feldman Architects, Wall of New Jersey.
Could you please give us the benefit of your credentials, Mr. Feldman?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, as well as approximately 12 to 14 other states up and down the East Coast. I possess a Bachelor of Architecture from Temple University that was acquired back in 1986. Or five.
Not to me either.
I have appeared before boards, I've appeared before this board, although it's been some time since that occurred.
I appreciate that, thank you. Please proceed.
86.
Please proceed, we accept your credentials.
Okay. Actually, the attorney laid out pretty much everything I was going to to talk about. This is a 25-foot-wide lot where I believe 50 is required. When you're dealing with a 25-foot-wide lot and the setbacks that are associated with that, this particular lot would would allow a building envelope of 11 by 25, not really conducive to a size footprint for a family. What we tried to do was accomplish a four-bedroom home where the the house would would warrant somebody with a family wanting to maintain a lifestyle here in Asbury and, you know, not be transient in nature. As we were talking about with the garage concern, what we did was, if I go through the plans that are being made, A1, A2, A3, that's makes it, I'm sorry, we're gonna make that A1. A1? It consists of four sheets. I have a cover sheet, A1, which is the elevations, A2, which are the floor plans, and A3, which are building details. If you look at A2, which are the floor plans, you can see that there is a garage that's located to the front of the house. Again, given a 25-foot-wide lot, if we were to do a detached garage in the back of the property, we would require 10 feet to get past the house, to get to the rear. A three-foot setback on one side would leave us roughly 12 feet to construct a home. Not really all that practical. So what we opted to do was to incorporate a garage into the first floor and set that garage far enough back where we could have an additional parking spot off-street on the property in front of the, you know, on the driveway going to the garage. In doing that, what it did was it actually then pushed the house a little bit further back in order to get a living room, kitchen, and breakfast area, as well as the powder on the first floor. Coming upstairs, we were able to get four bedrooms on the set A1A, with two baths and a laundry area. The house was dependent to be built on the Slabon grade, and so we kind of needed the space, the square footage of the total home is roughly about 1,600 square feet, so it's not absorbed by any need. A1 depicts the elevations, which we're proposing, driving through the neighborhood. There's houses that have gateways, there's houses that have pit rooms. We feel that what we're proposing is going to fit nicely into the home. We also incorporated nicely. Uh, we also incorporated nicely into the neighborhood. We also incorporated a front entry that would have a little porch, uh, off to the side as well. Um, I have some exhibits here of the home that we built at 34 Thieway, just down the street.
Make that A2. How many votes?
Uh, it consists of four photos.
A2 consists of four photos.
And this is the house, this house is identical, uh, in nature to what we're proposing. Um, and this was built on a 20-foot, 25-foot wide lot as well. So, the board could see what we're proposing. That's what we built, uh, just down the street, uh, very successfully. You could see how we, um, by designing it with the one-car garage, it allows for the landscaping and the lawn to the one side and not taking up as you're going past the street or past the house, an entire, uh, sea of, uh, blacktop in the front of the home.
Is that also a four-bedroom?
That's a four-bedroom as well, it's a... Same width as, as what we're proposing, same lot size in terms of the width of the property that we're...
How much is on each side of the, the house, uh...
Three feet.
Three feet.
This one has three feet?
Yes.
The one you're showing us?
Yeah, that has three feet. The one we're proposing is, uh, 3.08 as well.
How far does the garage stick out from the, the front wall of the house?
The garage protrusion is, uh... From, from the front door.
Eight, eight point 11?
John, if I may, you might be good to swear Donna, the government just wanted to say big Donna addressed the garage and the protrusion, you know, which might be a less bad.
Sure.
Yes.
Where's your hand for this? John Swirke has the money, he's about to decide if you go through the number of the street. Have you ever seen change in the record or do you have a board, board plan?
Uh, Donna Miller, board planner.
The board engineer.
Thank you, Jack.
I know, I, well, my recollection is that Donna addressed that garage protrusion.
Uh, yes, but I, I think Mr. Feldman actually answered the question.
It's fine, it's fine, it's just a case...
Can you just clarify, Tony, where, where is this other house?
The house that, I'm past, that just passed, 34.
Is that A2?
The way.
It's down on the dead end, right?
Asbury.
It's down by the church, correct?
Is that still, still Asbury?
Yeah, it's down by the church. If you go down Springwood Avenue and hang a left, it'll be on the right, it'll be on the left side. Know where it is.
I'm sorry?
I know where it is.
So essentially, you're, you're duplicating that, that house in this location as well, Mr. Feldman?
Yes, that's the intent.
Okay.
And did you consider another design where the, the garage did not protrude in front of them?
Uh, we, we did, but what happens is, the first four-foot grid is roughly 200, uh, 681 square feet. The garage is approximately, uh...
216 square feet.
So if we do, if we start to push the garage back into the house like your, your design ordinance is required, uh, it's gonna just start to chew up too much of the little space inside the, uh, house.
Or alternately, you just lengthen the entry hallway?
Correct. If we were to lengthen the, the hallway though, two things would happen. We have more lot coverage, more building coverage, and we probably, and we wouldn't necessarily get the aesthetic appeal that we're getting with the double cable that we're proposing. Unless I pull that in further out, past the garage, which is then gonna come closer into, towards the street. And we just, you know, and, and create mortal hardship with the front yard setback.
Okay, that's in, that's basically in keeping with, there's more than one double-gabled house on that street, then more, and that's in keeping with the, um...
Correct.
What's on the street now.
Correct.
Okay, so I will, that's not the problem. Okay, that's in keeping with the architecture of the street. There are a lot of new houses on the street now.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
I'm sorry, the, so this 34 DeWitt, did you design this?
Yes, we did.
This is also your design?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a four-bedroom, one-car, attached garage?
Correct.
On a, what size lot?
Uh, that one is 25 by, I believe, 150. It's a little bit deeper than the one we have.
It was basically the same design?
Yes. I think because that was a deeper lot, if I recall, that house might be a little bit deeper.
Okay.
Where are your mechanicals going, Mr. Feldman?
The mechanicals would be located in the attic. In the attic over the second floor. AC units are in the rear. Yes.
All right, can you see anything?
That's where they're showing off the lot?
Yes, yes, two units in the back.
Yeah.
What size bedrooms are the numbers three and four?
Bedroom three and four, the bedrooms are 811, so just under nine, um, by 12, five and 12. So nine by 12 and a half, nine by 12. And again, the idea behind the four-bedroom is to get somebody that's not gonna be transient, you know, may have two or three kids and, and still function with the dog.
Those are small bedrooms, though.
They are. Code requires 80 square feet minimum with, uh, seven-foot dimension in any one direction or eight feet in any one direction, so we exceed code requirements. Um, the other thing is also, if you are providing a four-bedroom, you know, we do want a little bit more living space on the first floor, whereas by pushing that garage in and chewing up some of the living space, it, it wouldn't be as effective for that
How are we proposing, are there closets here?
I'm sorry?
I'm having a hard time looking. I have my glasses on, closet space in the bedroom.
Right. So, so bedroom four has a five-foot closet over here. Bedroom two and three have closets that are roughly three and a half feet, and the master bedroom has a double closet, two closets that are, chip out four foot four and one. A total of eight and a half feet of closet space.
And bedroom two is, uh, it's just hard to read the dimensions, sorry. What's the dimension of bedroom two?
Uh, bedroom two is nine foot four by 12. And we are providing washroom garage as well on the second floor.
Okay, and you basically lined up all your, your laundry room and your bathrooms. Okay, that's cool.
Yes.
I can understand that for reasons.
Yeah.
You know, drainage and utility, okay, so that's cool. I have a problem with that. Um...
Is there a curb cut there now?
Uh, I don't believe so, no.
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 So what size curb cut are you proposing?
I'd have to look on the engineering drawings.
Yeah, is, um...
12 foot?
Is the engineer gonna testify or...
The engineer is here.
Okay.
He left for a long branch hearing, and we're hoping that he's gonna come back very shortly.
I see.
Yeah, it's, it's actually 12, it's actually 12 foot.
All right, well, we'll, we'll have to wait for the engineer to discuss further other questions with him.
Okay.
Was there any thought given to making this a three-bedroom versus a four? Like, how, with the size of it, how did you come about making it a four-bedroom on this?
Well, I, I, yeah, we were really looking towards the marketability of getting a family in here, um, into the, into the stuff and make it a, a home, a year-round residence and, you know, either a rental or possibly selling to owner-occupant, and a four-bedroom just is more conducive to that.
And how much backyard is there?
It's, uh, six feet.
Six feet.
Not counting the, where the, you know, AC units are and the little platform.
Got a lot of room for children to play?
No.
It's what the beach is for.
It's my half walk.
Yeah, it's a long walk.
Yeah, I think...
We're gonna strike that comment from the record.
Which one?
Oh, I didn't mean to say it in insulting ways, but, but, let's move on.
Any further questions for Mr. Feldman? Board professionals? Anyone in the public for Mr. Feldman? I assume, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Feldman.
Thank you.
So, where do we go from here?
Well, no. They can't answer engineering.
I'm working chat, and, uh, we're done that project. I'm another licensed engineer, but if there's...
No, 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 thank you, no.
They want to talk to the engineer.
So, based on that, we're going to have to carry you so that we can get further testimony for the application.
Keep it on the floor, wait. I'm sorry? Keep it on the floor, wait.
I had a conversation with him. I can offer what him and I discussed. That helps at all, but they can't for us to say that here.
Yeah, I, I want to hear the testimony on the record.
There's no question for that.
I appreciate that, Doug, but we would rather have the testimony from the witness.
Why don't we pass this one, Ken? Why don't you, you, this is an undersized lot case?
Yes.
You did a notice?
Yes.
Purchase and all that, why don't you enter that in the record?
Okay.
Let's see what you got on that. Let's make it, uh, what are we up to, A3 or something?
Yeah.
A...
Why don't you tell us what A3 is?
Okay, A3 is a letter sent to the neighbor, and A4 is a letter sent to the other neighbor. Both letters...
Can I just ask you, when you say the neighbor, you mean on either side of the property?
I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Contiguous property owners to the left and right, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So the owners of 209 DeWitt and the owners of 213 DeWitt. Uh, both of them, we offered the opportunity to either purchase or sell their property. One of them responded, but has not continued to pursue the offer to purchase.
So where does that stand? That, are you going to continue to negotiate with this other neighbor, or...
It was a really low-ball offer that...
The law is, I mean, let me, let me, let's circle back. The law in, this is a classic undersized lot case, right? Doesn't appear to be any, any area within the three sides. Not sure about the rear. What lot is to your rear?
Um, I've noticed the left and right because it was a width, um, issue.
It's a lot size issue too, isn't it?
What?
Yeah, it's also a depth issue because you don't have the, you know, you have a six-foot rear yard.
So, that could be correct. You could always, since it's probably gonna be carried anyway, you could probably send it right to the rear block and see what the story is. But on an undersized lot, it's a classic undersized lot case, assuming everything around it, I believe on both sides, they're undersized lots that are the same size as this. I don't know about the rear, okay, whether or not they can subdivide off or buy his lot or what have you. Um, the point of it is that, to, though it's part of the hardship criteria, it's not hardship so much in the zoning court in a, yeah, let me, let me circle back. The theory behind nonconforming law is, we want nonconformities to go away as soon as practical. If somebody offers to buy your lot, adds to their lot, that undersized lot has now gone away, but the criteria is that the offer has to be based on the fair market value of the subject lot, as if it were approved for the application to build the house. So you can't, you're not selling your own lot. You would have to get a price that's equal to the value of that lot, if in fact were approved, uh, for the house. So that would change the value substantially. Anybody that comes in would have to do that, okay? And if that were the case, then, uh, the advocate would be made, oh, because they would get the value of their lot as opposed to who approves. And the law would see that an undersized lot gets absorbed into a more conforming lot, left, right, and that's, that's what the law is. So that's why you're required in undersized lot cases for people to send out letters to see if they can buy land or sell theirs to make their lot more conforming. In this case, we know on the left and right, you can't buy the land because they're undersized lot, that, that's in practice, that would not work as a requirement. If either contiguous property owner wants to buy this gentleman's property, it has to be done based on the fair market value, post-approval versus pre-approval, that's the condition. So, if you notice both sides, sounds like we're coming back for another meeting to talk to the engineer. So in the interim, we could have you notice the rear property.
Sounds good.
So, I would suggest that we do that, without further notice, carrying the case over.
Thank you, Mr. Serpico.
Take that for granted, that you notice the rear property as well.
Agreed.
All right, so, what do we have, Marie? I guess I assume that it would, the next one would be the end of September, correct?
Um, September 26.
Is September 26 amendable for your people, Mr. Cromer?
It's, I'll make myself available. Um, I just want to confirm that we're closing the architect's testimony because the architect asked me...
I, I...
He might come back.
Right? You have any more questions?
I, I don't have any questions for...
I do. Um, being familiar with the property that was built at the deep end, the dead end, end of DeWitt, did you take that into consideration when you looked at the lot over on the other side? When you look, okay, the one that you built at the other end of DeWitt, okay, heading towards Neptune, okay, basically the backside to the border of Neptune, did you consider the size of that lot when you compared this? Because it doesn't fit, okay? I mean, I'm very familiar with what you built, and I think it's quite attractive, okay? But it's, it just seems like you just came up with a design, mimicked the design, and said, I'm gonna put it right here. Was there any consideration given to the neighborhood?
Well, yeah, I, I think what we're proposing fits within the, within the neighborhood at, at both locations, at 34 and 211, if that's what you're asking.
Now, keep in mind, if you don't come back, that the board, the board may not accept that rear yard. They don't need, if, then it may require a redesign. They're not, they're not voting. They're not saying by releasing him that they're in full agreement.
I, I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Mr. Cromer, I, I think you should have Mr. Feldman available.
I, I don't have a problem coming back. I'm just asking if I need to, that's all.
All right.
You have more?
Personally, I'm struggling with your design. It's, you're trying to squeeze it in, and I might need you back. I would prefer that you're here.
That's fine.
And you're putting four bedrooms on a lot with basically a six-foot backyard, so on one end, you're saying we want to make it conducive to parents and children, but would children want a six-foot backyard?
Well, we also have an 18-foot by, uh, 15-foot front yard as well, that's grass.
No, no, no.
Based on the design that we're proposing.
But this is like for debate, like this is...
Are we putting the cart?
Mr. Harris is correct.
Okay, no.
The lot, the lot...
But I still think we're putting the cart before the horse.
Right, sure.
So, if you find that you're going to end up selling the, the lot, this discussion becomes moot, correct? So I, I think you need to first determine if this lot is going to be sold to one of the neighbors.
Okay, I think that the offer that was made has been abandoned because it hasn't been pursued.
Yeah, but we're saying...
But you can't say that.
You didn't notice lot four.
For the other lot.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, so I think you need to first resolve the issue of whether the lot is going to be sold, and then we can proceed from there.
Okay, um, may I ask one thing, only because we're gonna come back and I just want to be respectful of the board's time? I sense that there's concern about the rear yard. Is there anything else that...
Is there anything else that maybe you would want us to think about tweaking so that we could come back and?
I think we need the engineer in order to have this.
Well, I can say from the architect's perspective, perhaps something smaller, less bedrooms. So you have a bigger backyard. So it is conducive to a family if that's your intent. That's just, I'm struggling with the size of this on the size of the lot and your presentation that this is meant for a family. I'm not here to discuss playing in the front yard. I'm talking about the backyard, I'm talking about the size of the bedrooms and how it doesn't seem to work. So you might want to come for me, come with an alternate idea or be able to talk about an alternate idea. I'm struggling with this one.
The only thing I could add to that is the bedrooms are on the second floor. Reducing the number of bedrooms on the second floor is not going to reduce the living space, which is creating the six-foot setback to the rear yard on the first floor. So given the first floor space and the deep.
I said reduce the structure as well if possible.
I'm sorry?
Reduce the size of the structure, not just the bedrooms.
Yeah, perhaps some of the living space is moved upstairs at the expense of the footprint.
Yes.
I think also a large part of the design challenge is that a garage has to be 18 feet long. Is that what? So that eats up a lot of the space. We could. Going back.
I hear you, but what I'm saying is it doesn't have to be this size.
Let me ask you this question.
On this lot, on this nonconforming lot.
Would the board be susceptible to? Right now, it's a two-story structure. The homes in that area, the majority of the homes in that area.
We can't give you an answer to that, Mr. Feldman.
Are two and a half stories. If we were to create space as a habitable attic and reduce the footprint that way.
We're not here to design this project for you. I'm just trying to give you my feedback on what I've seen so far tonight.
Okay.
And I can only speak for myself.
Yeah, I'm struggling as well.
A planner will argue, a planner would bring out the points of a design based on consistency with other houses in the neighborhood. But you don't have a planner either.
Correct.
Planner, engineer.
And the relationship of three stories versus two stories.
There's an analysis that's going to require planners. So if you want to go in another direction, you have to step back, amend, and come back if the presentation is.
Is.
You can't make a struggle, you can't do that.
Is the end of September enough time for you guys to address these issues?
It's probably going to have to. Yes.
Well, we have dates in October.
The next available date would be October 10.
No, I.
Really, October 10?
September 10 is a holiday.
I'll add also, I'm struggling with the size of the structure. I'm struggling with the garage.
Okay.
So I don't think it's just one board member.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate that. Is removing the garage on the table or?
Again, we can't tell you what to do.
Okay, I get that.
Your goal is to come back with, I think, a more reasonable design.
And that fourth bedroom, to me, creates a density problem because if we continue as a board to allow people to put four-bedroom units on undersized lots, now we create a density problem, not just for the house, but for the entire community.
Okay.
Especially when you talk about a six-foot backyard.
Got it.
Okay, so I would readjust that way of thinking.
Okay.
Especially when you talk about buying. If I were to say a four-bedroom, I would think a rental because I get more money for four bedrooms than I get for three. And that's what I'm thinking when you said that, four bedrooms versus three. Okay, we will rent to buy, okay? Then it becomes an advantageous financial situation. But it's not advantageous to the people when we talk about density and actual living space because you are meant to enjoy your house. Anytime you make an investment in the house to purchase or to rent, you are meant to enjoy that piece of property and not be punched into a little piece of space and just say live there. We're trying to improve the quality of life on the west side of Asbury Park.
Yes, yeah, no, we appreciate it. It's a challenge because the lots are small.
From a legal perspective, you're going to notice the rear problem.
Yes.
Okay, when are you going to do that? I want.
It'll be tomorrow.
Before, okay. You're going to do that tomorrow, so that gives more than adequate time between now and the next meeting for you to get a response.
Yes.
Yeah, and change the letter. The letter should be between you and the property owner. It has nothing to do with Michelle Alonso or anything like that.
Yeah, the city doesn't need to know.
The city doesn't have anything to do with that.
What the money situation is.
A letter is addressed to the property owner.
Wasn't there something in there about?
The response says send it to the city. Do you have an answer?
I put a CC to the city. That's what the form had at the back of the book.
Yeah, as long as, yeah, don't, that's fine. But just to keep it private between the property owner and the contiguous property owner, there's no interest from any of the departments at this point. And just make sure that it's sent timely. Send it certified and regular and let me know the results. And of course, if there's any further communication between you and either property owner to your left or to your right, you're going to need to know.
We'll report it.
For Donna, is Doug just looking at the calendar for the September 2016 date? The dates, it's enough time to have.
So if you're going to change the plans, you would need to resubmit revised plans by?
Because we also have the holiday, is my concern.
Yeah, technically, September 1st.
What day? Would you have to receive it, Donna?
September 1st.
September 1st, so you've got two weeks. Yeah, you've got two weeks.
Is that enough time for you guys?
I think I have some ideas.
Okay.
How about October? You agreed to the two weeks?
Yeah.
We're going to move to October.
October, okay.
So when is it in October?
October 10th, is that correct, Marie?
October 10th.
And revisions by when?
September 18th.
918 revisions. Sounds good. We're going to come back with a good plan.
Thank you.
Initially, when you move that, we're going to take a poll on it. Do you wait, ready to wait any time constraint if you have to act? In terms of additions, do you have a wish?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'll make a motion to carry 211 DeWitt Avenue Investment Partners to October 10, 2023, without further notice.
I'll second.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jose Alcoraz? Vice Chair Scully?
Yes.
Chairman Avaloni?
Yes.
Carrie?
And I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
All aye, aye, aye.